At this time, I will call to order the Wednesday, February 15, 2023, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. May I have a roll call, please?
Joanne Chester. Matt Cho. Ashley McLaughlin.
Here.
Adam Roche.
Here.
Nancy Yutman.
Here.
Charles Wormbrun.
Here.
And Harvey Welch.
If so, we will entertain any motions.
I move. I'll move that we approve the minutes of the November 16 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Then all in favor of adopting those minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Minutes are adopted. We have any continued public hearings?
Did we have any? We might have had additional communications. Did we have?
That's about this hearing now, correct?
Yes.
Any continued hearings from the last meeting? All right. At this time, I would ask anybody that intends to speak, stand up and be sworn. Yes, you too. You swear affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief. At this time, I call ZBA 2023-C-01. A request by David Huber for a conditional use permit to allow a second principal structure at 907 East Washington Street in the R3, single and two-family residential zoning district. May we have a staff report, please?
All right. Thank you all for being here. As you just heard, this is a request by David Huber to build a second principal structure, which would be a detached, single-family home at 907 East Washington Street. This would be a second home in addition to the existing home on the lot. The zoning ordinance allows multiple principal structures on a lot by conditional use permit, provided the uses are allowed in that district. Single-family dwellings are in allowed use in the R3 district, so a conditional use permit may be requested to have two on one lot. Staff find that the request meets the criteria for a conditional use permit and are recommending that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the request conditional on general conformance with the submitted site plan. We did receive three additional pieces of public input since the staff report went out last Friday, and those have been provided to the Zoning Board of Appeals members. And all those comments received thus far have been in favor of Mr. Huber's request. The property is located on East Washington Street between Lynn and Wabash. It is owned R3, single and two-family residential, as are all surrounding properties. The properties to the west, east, and south are single-family dwellings, and then directly across the street to the north are a duplex and another single-family dwelling. The applicant is proposing to build a 1,128-square-foot home on the lot, south of the existing 630-square-foot home on the lot. You can see that they would be separated by a newly constructed parking area between the two homes. Other than the conditional use permit requirement, the proposal would comply with typical R3 development regulations such as open space ratio, floor area ratio, parking requirements, and setbacks, and would not require any variances. Something else to mention is that the R3 district would typically allow two units on a lot by right as a duplex. As we saw, there's one duplex directly across the street. Mr. Huber's lot is below the minimum width required for a duplex, though he could have requested a variance to build a duplex on a lot below the width minimum. His lot does meet the area requirements for a duplex. However, his application cites the desire to maintain consistency with the scale of other houses in the neighborhood, most of which are between 850 and 1,150 square feet, as part of his decision to instead opt for two smaller detached homes as opposed to a duplex. And then this is a photo of the current rear yard area where the proposed unit would be placed. Moving on to the conditional use permit criteria, the first criteria is that the proposed use would be conducive to the public convenience. The applicant argues that this criteria is met because the proposal would increase the housing supply in the area within existing infrastructure networks while also generating tax revenue for the city. Staff agree with this reasoning and find the criteria met. The second criterion is that it would be, it would not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district where it is located. Staff find this criteria to be met because two units on a lot are allowed by right as a duplex in the district, which this proposal would be functionally very similar to, and it would comply with all other development regulations for the district. And there are several other duplexes in the area where there are two units on a lot. And then another thing, just in terms of potentially being injurious or detrimental to the district, we did receive comments, which you've received, referring to Mr. Huber's investments in his property since purchasing it, which some of the comments felt were for the better. And then the final criterion is that the proposal would conform to the regulations, standards, and character of the district. Again, other than the conditional use permit requirement, it would comply with all typical R3 development regulations, such as open space, floor area ratio, parking, and setbacks. And he's also chosen two smaller homes specifically to keep with the scale and character of homes in the area. So the Zoning Board of Appeals has the options in case ZBA 2023-C-01. You may vote to approve the conditional use as submitted, or vote to approve the conditional use with any conditions or requirements as you deem appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance, or deny the conditional use. Again, staff find that the criteria have been met and are recommending approval conditional on general conformance with the site plan in Exhibit C, which you can see here as well. The applicant is here and can answer any questions directly. Otherwise, I can take questions for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead, Nancy.
Does this, I see the drawing on the screen. Does this fulfill the parking requirement?
Yes, it would. So the zoning ordinance would require two parking spaces per unit. So between, there's the area between the houses, and then there's also the area running along the north property line. Actually, I think that's the west property line. It's just at the top here. But with all that access drive space, they would sufficiently meet the four spaces necessary.
Go ahead.
How do you envision that working in this diagram? I mean, let's say if we go to the far southwest and we park a car there, do we have to back it up into the middle where two other cars are parked?
So I would defer to the applicant on how specifically he intends on that working. Just in terms of meeting the criteria of the zoning ordinance, there is sufficient space for four vehicles, so that criterion is met. It does look like on that, that branch that runs parallel to Unit B, there's about 40 feet there, which should be enough space to stack two vehicles just for that unit. And then it's, there's about 35 feet in that branch between the two units. So depending on vehicle length, I think the average vehicle length is 14, 15 feet. But just in those two branches alone, there would very likely be space for, for two vehicles to be stacked in either of those branches.
Okay. So our definition of a stacked vehicle is the one vehicle behind the other vehicle and backing up onto the street?
Yes. Yes, the zoning ordinance does allow parking to be in an access drive that backs up onto a right-of-way.
Is that the situation we're envisioning here in the southwest?
Yes, and that's, that's not uncommon on the street.
Any additional questions for staff? No. Does the applicant wish to be heard? In case there are questions? Why don't you sign in just in case? Yeah. He signed in back there, but this is, and I believe I hear there are questions, so sign in.
Seems like he could move this back and then have.
Thank you.
Make sure the microphone's on there. The green light should, there you go. Thank you.
And you're Mr. Huber, right?
I am.
Yeah. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Could you explain how you envision the parking there, please?
It's just an extension of the current parking. And so stacked parking is permitted and is essentially the predominant form of parking in this neighborhood and probably most, meaning, single-family houses most often in this neighborhood have a single access driveway of, I think the minimum's nine feet.
So you would have Unit B park to the west of their house, and you'd have Unit A park in the new east-west road that's being built in between the two, leaving the rest of that area able to be backed up out of?
The idea with the planning of it is that it could be used as a turnaround, meaning the depth of each of those respective spurs is great enough where if the car pulls all the way to the end of one, another car in the opposite A, let's call it, could back into those things. I should say that among the houses I own in this immediate neighborhood, which are two other ones that are occupied, those are three-bedroom homes, and there's one vehicle for each of those houses. I don't say this, I don't rent to students, not because I'm, I don't, obviously, I can if I want to, or legally, if they're the right tenant, et cetera. The point is that these are not high occupancy homes, given the marketing of them, this particular neighborhood, the housing size. It's different than, say, a four-bedroom occupied by four roommates typically that you might find closer to campus where you'd have four vehicles. There's not a heavy reliance on vehicles. It's part of the identity of the homes, I guess, as well, that they're smaller, they're people who value compactness and efficiency and certain amenities versus just scale and a two-car enclosed garage. That housing stock is provided. Other parts of the city, it's provided at the golf course, Atkins Group, much bigger entity than mine, supplies that form of housing. I think it's good that we don't, there's just also not attached garages in this neighborhood. Typically, they're detached, small garages, many of them kits that are leaning to the side. It's not a neighborhood where parking is this dominant kind of thing. And I don't find, just from a market perspective, that the need is there, but it does sufficiently meet the four parking criteria, four parking space criteria.
But you would have Unit A parking on the east-west concrete pad that's being built and not, not where they're parking right now?
No, because it doesn't exist, there's nothing, there's no improvements to the property, would that be south? No, yeah, south of the current house.
I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure that we're keeping the driveway open in front of, so people come back out to the street. So in my mind, everybody that would live in Unit A would have to park on your little spur, not to the west of their house.
Um, I, this is going to come across as a little, I'll push back on that a little bit and say, there's nothing in the ordinance, or there's nothing legally as a landlord that I can do to prohibit a tenant from parking anywhere on that driveway that I know of legally. The zoning ordinance doesn't say that a tenant must pull in 40 feet past the sidewalk. It works out. I don't police my tenants. I don't perform that kind of work as a landlord. I need to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and this suffices. But again, I would not make the kind of investment in a property that the market then says, I don't want to rent this house, it doesn't have enough parking, or the parking's terrible. Why would I go and invest $180,000 into, in construction of a new unit that is unrentable because the tenants find it unbearable to live in and use? It meets the zoning requirement. That's for the Plan Commission to determine whether stacked parking is, is not a permitted form of parking.
I think we're not communicating very well here, I think. So this, this driveway is only 12 feet three and quarter, 12 and three-quarters feet wide, correctly?
That's three feet, three inches larger than the minimum required driveway width.
Okay, first, okay. So if I have Car 1, how does Car 4 get past those cars unless?
There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that requires a car to pass. I can defer to staff to verify this. It is my understanding that the zoning ordinance does not prescribe the means by which Vehicle 1, 2, 3, or 4 that are parked off-site on a private piece of property in the R3 zoning district accesses such a property so long as the access drive meets the requirements and the area for the off-site parking meets the requirements.
Just for clarification, Section 84, subsection E, says, "Except for driveways serving a single-family or two-family residence, no parking space shall be permitted where the exiting vehicle must be backed into or out of a public street." Vehicles are allowed to back out toward public alleys when proper aisle widths are provided. So one answer might be that those three vehicles back out onto Washington Street to allow the vehicle at the front end to pull out and leave, and then they all pull back in. Stacked parking is allowed.
I should also add that a single-family house could have, in theory, six parking spaces, all stacked, and this question of how Vehicle 5, 6, 4, 3, 2, 1 exit a single row of parking is never a consideration of the city or of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And I would, I would add, Mr. Huber is correct that stacked parking is allowed for duplexes in the zoning ordinance. Were it not, you know, and were he just considering we could have, you know, one, maybe two cars parked in either of these branches, he might have requested a variance for that, and they're two very small houses. And staff could have decided if we would have supported that, but he doesn't need to do that because it meets the letter of the zoning ordinance. But functionally, as Mr. Huber has pointed out, for two homes of this size, it's perhaps unlikely both of them would end up having two cars that are like long enough where it would actually be a problem where anyone's blocking anyone.
I'm talking widths, not lengths.
It meets the width requirements for an access drive.
Is nine feet, so it surpasses that by thirty-something percent.
I just don't understand why you don't just designate the parking spots on the spur.
From a planning perspective, that's a private property issue to be worked out between the tenants.
Well, I don't understand we have people backing out on a major street, okay, when they could use the spur to turn around and come out frontwards, forward onto Washington Street, instead of backing out two cars so the third car could get out there. And these people are going to drive around the block, or they're just going to sit there, you know? To me, it seems incredibly impractical. If, if there was only one house there, I could see it, but if we're going to allow two there, it seems to me the parking, some arrangement better than telling me that I can have four cars stacked on the north-south pavement, and that they're going to call the people up next door and say to them, could you move your car, or I got to get in, you know?
I'm, I'm a little confused. Why would they need the other person to move if there's two cars on one side and one car on the other side? Wouldn't you only need one unit to have the car back out to get the other car out for each unit?
Well, we're not, what we're saying is it's legal to park four cars straight across, okay? What I'm saying is that from where the middle pavement is being added in between the two places, that there should be no parking from that juncture out to Washington Street so people can access Washington Street without bothering the other house.
Well, I, is, I think that is the functional nature of that spur, which isn't required and does exist, and I think, I think we can safely assume, given that it meets all the requirements, that people will utilize it in the most functional way possible, and I don't really think it's our concern, given that it meets the requirements. It feels a little bit beyond the scope of our decision.
Go ahead.
One question. Does Unit B, is it required to have two exits? I see Unit A has two exits.
No, although every room is a requirement of the IRC, the International Residence Code, has to have an egress window or access, it could be a door. So functionally, for the fire code, there's multiple, but no, there actually will be a second door on the south side that's not indicated in the plan, just because the design, some of the specifics have not been, but that would in essence be the back door, the one that's not drawn, and the one on the west would be the front door, access down the drive where packages and guests might be received.
Are there further questions to the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Are there members of the audience that wish to be heard in favor of this application? Come forward, please. And you have to sign in. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. I've been living in Urbana for many years, and I'm a firm believer in infill and smaller homes. My sister and I own the home next door. It's a one-bedroom. We're retired. This is perfect for us. When we bought it, the realtor said to us, you better make a quick, quick offer because these go so fast, because there's a need for smaller, less than 1,000 square feet. I even think his might be too big. We're firm believers in the smaller, and he's my neighbor. I've watched him do all the building next door, down the street. He's very responsible and considerate of our neighborhood and of this kind of use what's here. Or I built an apartment over my garage over on Florida. It's less than 440 square feet. I've never had a problem renting it. It was originally built for my mother. There's, I think there's a need for that size, for that type of housing, sort of squeezed in between, makes it friendlier. You don't have to drive as far for anything. There's a lot more walking. I swear there's, you know, at least two dogs per person in our neighborhood. So I'm all for having the two units instead of one big unit that is to two people. I like the fact there's space between them, a little more greenery. It just feels more neighborly, besides, I think, serving a need. I know a number of people who all live in one-bedroom houses. They don't want to live in an apartment. They're getting harder to find. One, one-bedroom anything is very hard to find. Anyway, that's what I'm promoting. Anybody have a question?
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard in favor of? Are you in favor or opposed? You have questions to, to the board or to the staff, or to the board?
I'm Candace Ziegler. I live at 909, right next door to Mr. Huber, on the east side, and I've got a, well, one thing I do want to say immediately, we were talking about the parking, that area that is proposed there, and there's a fence at the end of it, that's right by my family room windows. That's what's going to be coming in, the headlights. I just want that on record. And, and I'm asking for a privacy fence on my side, on the, the east side. There's, we do, we do really need that. There is going to be construction there. That's a, everybody knows what a construction site is going to entail. I don't know how the equipment's going to get there. You're going to have litter. There's going to be a lot of foot traffic. There's noise. This will give the privacy for whoever Mr. Huber rents to. It's also going to ensure my privacy. And I have a dog, and I make sure she's, she's under control. You know, and then there, well, the foot traffic, the noise, that all goes along with it. I just think that that is going to be conducive to both sides with the privacy fence running all the way down. It's on the other side. I'm not asking for anything that hasn't been approved. I mean, it's there already on the other side. The other thing that I'm concerned about is grade. What will the final grade be so I'm not flooded out? They're my concerns. I thank you.
Thank you. There's one person left. Do you wish to be heard, ma'am? All right. All right. Mr. Huber, do you have any response to your neighbors' issues about construction and privacy?
Sure. I should also thank her for coming, because it's not easy to have these kinds of exchanges between neighbors, and I'm happy that she expressed those and that my other neighbors are here as well. What this is supposed to be. With regard to the fence, I'm not opposed, actually regarding the parking in terms of privacy, headlights, et cetera, there is noted a fence at the end of that spot for that purpose. So that would be along the east side, indicating wood fence six-foot-high proposed that doesn't exist, but that would be constructed for that purpose. I'm not opposed to a fence. I actually don't draw them into such a plan because I find fences go both ways in terms of public sentiment. Some people are offended by them. You're walling yourself off, you're, et cetera. I'm, there is one to the west that she referred to, that, that's because that, their house is closer to that property line, and they have a private patio back there, so that was constructed for that purpose. So, yeah, I'm, I am open to that, and I personally have no problem. Rainage. There's, I'm actually not allowed to drain onto a neighboring property. That is, I don't know. Subdivision ordinance, or it's the planning ordinance, or the, I don't know where, I mean, it's a, it's a widely-held convention of residential construction in America, property in America, that you cannot dispense water onto a neighboring property or interfere with the topography in such a way that causes water to flow in excess to the neighboring property. I retain a lot of water. I have a rain garden in the right-of-way. I have a rain garden to the east of the driveway. So I, the driveway itself, as the photos and the drawing indicate, is permeable, meaning it absorbs rather than disperses water off-site. So compared, relatively speaking, there is great measure, relative to other homes in the neighborhood, there is great consideration to the water retention and absorption. But I don't envision anything specific to the construction here that would cause water to disperse. And that is something that the inspectors, I believe it falls under their purview, obviously, like when you're grading your site and they come to do a final inspection, which I should also add, this is subject to inspections, meaning there are city officials who are gonna be entering, in addition to submitting this. They're gonna be coming and they're gonna be reviewing, and one could, on their weekend, grade their backyard in many wonderful ways and never be subjected to the kind of scrutiny of the city. And that's not a complaint, that's just to say that I'm here going through the zoning board of appeals. It's a full, will be a fully permitted project. It will be subject to all national, state, local building codes, zoning ordinance, et cetera. So that's a long-winded way of saying I'm vigilant about these things. I am very open and amenable to constructing the fence, and effort will be made to retain as much water onsite as possible, but it will in no way be dispersed onto a neighboring property in any further way than the current grading allowed. So I guess, except for the fact that there is a footprint of 600 square feet and there's a non-porous patio of 12 by something, that is the only additional non-porous area of the site, meaning I'm not generating a vastly significant amount of stormwater, rainwater that is going to, which is a, is a real concern, and lock coverages in certain zoning ordinance of certain cities. But anyways, I could keep talking, but that's the short of it, and I will take care with that.
So I'm just wondering, with the conditional use permit, can we add language that would require at least a fence, a privacy fence, where headlights might go into the neighbors' windows?
I believe there's a fence already in that area on the site plan, so the recommendation that the approval be conditional on conformance with the site plan, I believe would cover that concern.
So you're not against a privacy fence from the one you've got on the site plan to the, I don't know how far to the south, but to the south to cover construction and seeing the other people's windows, I guess? Because I thought that's what she was requesting.
Yeah, I see a gap here in where the fence would be also, it looks like.
I mean, would you, could you, I mean, would you, how do you feel about running the privacy fence, the, let's, let's go with the entire length of the east side of the property?
I am not opposed, and I have other properties where similar thing has done, been done. And this kind of feedback is actually important to me because some people are very bothered by construction of a fence, so.
You'd be okay with that?
I would be okay with that, yes.
Okay.
Just bearing in mind, although like many property lines, there are trees along that. I'm not used to making decisions about things that, you know, have certain contextual parameters and circumstances and so on, on the fly like this, but my understanding is that would be reasonable.
I don't know if I would be comfortable putting that into an approval. It doesn't, it's, it still feels a little bit outside the scope and also really dependent on the neighbors. I don't know. I, I don't recall a time where we've required that on a, just like a private property. I do get the thing about the lights in the driveway, that is maybe a little exceptional. I don't know. Thoughts, Nancy? It looks like you wanna, or I'm sorry, not Nancy, Joanne.
You know, he does provide the fence in front of the driveway, six feet. That should cover any headlights. But as you go further back, as you mentioned, there could be trees right on that property line, which make it very difficult to put a fence straight back, and for us to say that you should have a fence straight back when that, the fence could go like this, you know, have holes in it, or require the expense of taking down a tree.
I'd also clarify, there is a fence currently. It's just a wire fence, four feet, meaning, so the desire of my neighbors for a privacy fence specifically, so solid fence of a certain height, so if that is the consideration sake of appeasing people, there probably should also be more specificity to that requirement. To what end does the fence serve? And is that shared by the committee? Because there, there is a fence, and again, I'm not opposed to building that privacy fence, but people, let's say, walking through the yard is not the, yeah, that's not the consideration.
I would have a hard time requiring a fence in this instance. It is residential. When you have commercial abutting residential, that is always the case that you have to provide some kind of visibility. As long as it was in front of the driveway to block the headlights, I would, I wouldn't want to require that on a residential piece of property.
I agree. I feel like I might want a fence on my property or depending on my neighbors, but that's kind of, I feel like that's kind of on me and not my neighbor, if that's what I prefer.
And the neighbor could construct the privacy fence?
I am allowed, I'll just say, as an owner of property and investor, be careful of the precedent that is set by neighbors would keep everyone requiring a fence. And I say this fully happy to build a fence, and I can vouch by that by saying, take a look at the other properties within a few blocks, and there are abundant fences.
So if I could just opine, conditions should be about making sure that the proposal fulfills the criteria, not additional amenities. If the proposed site plan meets the criteria, but somebody just doesn't like some other non-criteria aspect of it, then as Ms. McLaughlin said, that person could do something, you know? If some other house moved in that was a buy-right house, would you ask to put up a fence to screen that house from you? This conditional use permit isn't about, it's about adding a second structure to the property, and the parking has the required screening to stop the headlights from coming in. The rest of the house being near to it isn't really what the zoning ordinance is about regulating.
With that, are there any additional comments or questions? Thank you. I believe we've heard all the evidence in this matter that we are going to hear, so are we ready to call this question?
Yes. I guess I'd like to ask staff a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so basically what you've told me here is that we have no ability to regulate parking on private property that's in residential areas. I mean, here you tell me that, you know, that I can like regulate vehicular access and volume, what that, and you also tell me that I can require screening as fences, walls, or vegetation. So I kind of get what you're saying there with your strict definition of the fence, okay? But I still don't understand the parking. Why we don't designate parking spots, or do we?
So the zoning ordinance, depending on the type of use, does regulate parking design in terms of access drive width? If it's an arrangement where you have, you know, parking on either side of an aisle, it regulates the aisle width, depending on the degree of parking. But as far as for a single-family use or a duplex, it does allow parking provided to be met by stacked spaces in an access drive. So again, as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, it meets the requirements for four spaces.
So if you would have given us a diagram of the proposed parking that you guys say is correct, where would you put those four parking spots?
I think you could fit two in the area that's running along Unit B. You could fit one in the area between the two units. The definition for, for parking space length for stacked parking is 20 feet per vehicle. And then another space, yeah, would have to be in what's functionally more likely going to be used for shared access. Again, it could create a practical problem to be worked out between the tenants if each unit has two people driving two 20-foot-long vehicles. That could potentially be a problem, but there is enough length in the access drive combined that, as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned, the space requirement's met.
Do you know of any situation where we have two existing single-family homes on the one lot this small?
I just had an inquiry, a, gosh, I'm not gonna remember the address now, but a single-family home with a garage that was converted into a second dwelling unit back in the 1960s or 70s. That's essentially two single-family houses on a very small lot, and there is no garage. There is the access drive that pulls up to what used to be the garage.
I'm also aware of another garage apartment in East Urbana on, I don't know the lot size off the top of my head, but East Urbana lots are generally fairly small, and, you know, that's something that you might consider in an accessory dwelling unit. This case is kind of interesting because the proposed unit would actually be bigger than the unit that's already there. But again, it's two fairly small units on a lot.
And when we do plan reviews for single-family homes, we see a three-car garage that, okay, it's, you know, 35 feet wide, there's three spaces in there, and there's a 30-foot-long access drive that's 30 feet wide, that's up to six spaces there, but we don't But we don't regulate where people actually park. We don't say, okay, you have to park in the garage, or you have to park in the access drive. We don't stripe on the driveway, okay, here's your six spaces. And we still allow them to park on the street because the street is public access. So we do the minimum to ensure that there is enough parking space that's necessary, but then, you know, leave it up to the people to figure that out. And yes, technically, there's probably enough space just down the straight access drive for all four vehicles without ever using the branch.
And practically, unless, again, both units are driving two very long cars, it's possible you could have two cars stacked in either branch based on the average width of a vehicle. And, you know, if it's a compact car, you definitely could stack two vehicles in either branch.
I'd leave that to you. Anybody? All right. Are we now ready to call the question, this proposal?
I move that the zoning board of appeals approve the proposed conditional use in case ZBA 2023-C-01 with the following condition, that the second home will generally conform to the submitted site plan as shown in exhibit C.
It's been moved, is there a second to that motion?
My second.
Is there any additional discussion? I always get confused at this point. No. All right. And I believe we're ready to call this matter for a vote. We have a roll call, please.
Ashley McLaughlin.
Yes.
Adam Roche.
Yes.
Nancy Uteman. Charles Warmbrun.
Yes.
Harvey Welch.
Yes.
Joanne Chester, sorry.
Yes.
You were at the top of the list. My, my apologies.
That motion passes, and since it's conditional use, doesn't have to go any further, so. Application is approved. And Mr. Huber, I commend you for your willingness to work with your neighbors, to find solutions to whatever issues arise. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business?
There is not.
Any new business?
There is not any new business.
Any public input? Anybody want to be heard on anything else? No. You have a question?
Not related to this.
Oh, all right, we'll go back up to new business.
And in my personal email, I have any information saying that I.
And maybe others would agree that I would like to have a personal email sent to me saying, look at whatever and way to do that so that I don't miss a meeting.
I'd like to note that I also kind of missed the first opportunity to sign up, and I should have no excuse since I do this all the time, but it just, you know, wasn't, it was something I missed. But I spoke with the IT staff here at the city, and they were extremely helpful in walking me through how to set up the system so that any email that came to my city email would automatically forward to my personal email. And because that is a, that is something they have working on the city email. So we have to have the city email for like legal reasons, since we are city officials in this capacity, but if, but you are allowed to forward your city email to your personal email, and I bet if you talk with them on the phone or stop in here, they would walk you through it.
That must be what I have, because remember, I told you it just shows up on my personal email, so somehow, and I'm very technologically challenged, so I don't think it's any, I don't think it's anything I did, but somehow I get.
So you are just blessed.
Yeah, so, yeah, I get, I got all this in personal emails, some.
Yeah, we can certainly pass it along to the planning secretary and let her know that we're still having some communication issues. But again, as Adam said, IT is available and helpful and can help with forwarding.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a staff report? Yes, come forward, public input, sure, go ahead.
About the notification process, I'm just musing. Is there any way to somehow point people to information that only gets, basically, the agenda's put up the Friday prior to the meeting, right? And so that's the first time that anyone can actually see the substance of these requests, unless they show up. Basically, people aren't aware that they can actually see additional documentation like a site plan. Thank you. Yeah, just because I have had neighbors who receive letters from in past ZBA type hearings, and they'll approach me a month or two later, and they'll say, that thing you wanted to do, like, how did that go? And the thing they thought I wanted to do was like not what I was requesting, but if you just get the letter. So it's all to say that.
So what, what actually are you asking because the staff report is put on the meeting website the Friday before, like you said?
Right, right, right. If there's a way to basically like tell people in the letter, so neighbors are just.
There is. In the letter that all of the neighbors get, they are directed to the meeting website, and the letter says that the staff report will be posted the Friday before.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Huber is asking if there could be some information available for the public prior to the Friday before the case, because that's kind of a late deadline. Staff time is an issue and just getting the staff report prepared and everything, but I, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to potentially, if there's a site plan available, making that available on the website ahead of time. And I would also mention that our notices, you know, do provide the case manager's phone number and email, and we are available to discuss the case with anyone.
No, you, so perhaps, it's just, I've gotten, just as public input, let me just say, you can choose however you want to do it. People have just asked me, well, what is it that you're doing? It says, please submit input by this date, but I have no information beyond this letter.
If we uploaded the application to the meeting website, which would have your site plan, if we identify what meeting that that's going to happen, as soon as we identify that meeting, the issue though is that, you know, they have to know which meeting it's going to happen at. There isn't a general website that says, here are all the applications that we've received.
Well, I want, each meeting does have its own page, so I wonder if it would be possible to just put the exhibits for each case up ahead of time. We, we'll discuss this as planning staff and see what we can work out, but I see your point.
It's all to say that the date they're asked to give input, they have no additional information that's, I guess, they'll only accept if I go to their personal residence and give them it and say, can you please do something? So just relaying feedback from the citizens that they don't have enough basis to provide
Thank you. Your study session?
There is not.
And at this time, move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned at 8:01 PM. Thank you.